I want to call this meeting to order, please. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by two students from Wildwood Elementary, Avery Spohler and Brendan Taylor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty, justice, first all.
How do we hear in front of the seal so it looks all official?
Can you hear me? Okay, very good. So, we have two students again today from Wildwood Elementary to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'll just go in order as they showed up. Punctual lady to my left was here first. Avery Spohler. Avery is a 4th grader at Wildwood Elementary. She is an outstanding student who loves to read. She is participating in Girls on the Run, Girl Scouts, and softball. Avery loves spending time with her two younger brothers and wonderful parents. Parents, did you write that or did she have that to say? Are your younger brothers here? Where are they at? Awesome. So, when you hang out with them, what do you do?
We play outside and play with all their fun things that they have.
So, you're telling me, Girls on the Run and you play outside and you're spending your times playing outside, is that right? God bless you. These kids today, I gotta throw 'em out the front door. Well, thanks for coming out today. We have a little certificate for you. I'm gonna give you that, hold on. Just hang on to that for a second. The next fine young man here, his name is Brendan Taylor. Brendan Taylor is 10 years old and also a 4th grader at Wildwood Elementary in Mrs. Reamer's class. He's been going to Wildwood since kindergarten. His favorite class at school is gym and his favorite subject is math. Brendan's favorite sport to play is soccer. He currently plays defense for the Lightning and when he's not at school or playing soccer, Brendan enjoys playing video games. That's all, I won't hold it against you. What video games do you like to play?
Like Fortnite or something like that.
Fortnite. I don't even know what this is, but it's the biggest video game out there. My daughter, I have to almost set a timer. Alright, you're done. You're done. Homework. So, well, thanks for coming out today. I appreciate it. I also have a certificate for you right here. And the teacher, the principal from Wildwood here today? Why don't you come on up and talk to us real quick? Tell us about these students, something that they didn't tell us already.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to have our wonderful students from Wildwood here. It was truly an honor to have these two selected. When I sent an email and talked to the teachers about selecting someone who could represent Wildwood overwhelmingly, these two were selected from them. So, it's just an honor to be here with them. They're two amazing leaders. We, as a community, should be so proud of them, all they do each and every day. So, let's give them a round of applause for a great job. Thank you. Great leaders.
Well, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and get a quick photo.
Would the parents like to come up and say something?
Oh, no, we're good. Thank you for having our kids.
Photo?
Yes. Come on for the photo. All of us?
Yeah.
Should we stand behind you? Stand behind which ones belong to you. For the ones you play. Look me this way, please. Thanks again.
Councilwoman Green.
Present.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Londo.
Here.
President Godbod is absent excuse today. There is a quorum present.
We'll start with announcements and special presentations. Mary McLendon?
Good evening, Councilman Hertzberg, the entire council, to the clerk, to the deputy mayor, to all the dignitaries here and to the fine citizens of Westland. Good evening. I bring you greetings from the office of Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson. It's always good to be in the fine city of Westland. I want you to know that Commissioner Anderson has a free senior appreciation dinner coming. Now, this is for the real seniors, not the AARP seniors, okay, because they're like 49. But we're talking about the real ones, the ones that start at 60 years old. You have to be 60 years old to be a part of this dinner. It's Wednesday, June the 13th, and it's from 5:00 until 7:00 PM at the Burton Manor. And that's 2777 Schoolcraft Road in the city of Livonia. There's going to be free food, there's going to be a band there, and it's just a good time for you just to be there and enjoy one another. And it's for his entire district, which is Westland, Garden City, and the city of Inkster. So, you need to RSVP right away because the spaces are going and you want to be a part of that number. The number is 313-224-8855. Again, 313-224-8855. You must RSVP. You can bring one guest with you, so that's really great. You can bring someone with you. But be sure to RSVP right away so you'll be a part of the number because there is a cap. The cap is 300 seniors. So, you want to make sure that your name is on that list. And again, that's June 13th and everything is free. Also, outside of the district, Wayne County itself has a senior fun fest and that's for all of the citizens of Wayne County. And it's for the seniors. This one doesn't have an age, so whatever senior is to you is the senior. And that's Saturday, June the 23rd, from 11:00 until 2:00 PM. And that's at the Nankin Mills Park in Westland. And that's nice as well. If you need to call someone, you can call 734-326-5282 and you will get your tickets. Tickets are available. Again, that's 734-326-5282. And again, that's for all of the seniors. That's Saturday, June the 23rd, and it doesn't matter what city you live in or what district you live in within Wayne County, that's Wayne County Senior Fun Activity. I do have with me the park schedule for the Wayne County activities for the parks. And there's just so many fine activities that you want to make sure that you get your schedule. It's smaller this time, so it's easier to handle. But there are so many activities, new and different this year, so you want to make sure that you get your schedule so you can join in the fun in the Wayne County parks. Also, I'd like to, I know the children would like this one. Let's see here. But it's Mud Day. I don't think the parents like it as much, but Mud Day is Tuesday, July the 10th, from 11:00 until 1:00 PM at Nankin Mills in Westland. And that's at 33275 Heinz Drive. And kids ages 12 and younger are invited to take part in the Mud Day. Just make sure you got plenty of towels and paper and all of that to clean up after the mud. But that should be a great time as well. Also, on Saturday, June the 9th, 8:00 AM until 2:00 PM is Household Hazardous Waste Collection. And that's located at Henry Ford College, 5101 Evergreen Road. That's Dearborn, okay, just south of Ford Road. And you can go there and dispose of your hazardous waste. Now, sometimes we don't know that certain items are hazardous, but floor wax, floor care products, carpet cleaner, furniture polish, bathroom cleaner, stain remover, solvents, those are all hazardous wastes and you can dispose of them at the Henry Ford College on June the 9th. I have flyers for that. I also have flyers for the seniors appreciation dinner as well, if you'd like one. And I also have the park schedules, if you need one of those as well. And thank you again. It's a pleasure to be here.
Ms. DeLuca?
Melissa DeLuca, Westland Historic Commission. Good evening, lady and gentleman of the council and assorted staff. The members of the Westland Historic Commission would like to thank enormously the 150 people or plus that came to the grand opening of the Eloise Hospital Museum at Westland Historic Village Park this weekend on Saturday. The Eloise Hospital Museum took many hours of work by the commissioners, building the displays, assembling artifacts, and preparing the building. However, we would not have been able to complete all the work without support from many city officials, including Brian Harnos especially, Mayor Wilde, and of course, Mr. Ready, City Clerk Richard LeBlanc in his past and current roles, and many other city officials, including the Westland J.C.'s, Good Designs, the members of the Historic Society, and community volunteers. The Eloise Hospital Museum displays artifacts and pictures from all periods of the history of Eloise in Wayne County General Hospital. The Eloise Hospital served many roles in our community, from being a tuberculosis and influenza unit during outbreaks, helping those who needed a meal and warmth after the Great Depression, providing pioneering innovation in diagnostic x-rays, kidney transplants, and patient therapy methods, as well as the more well-known insane asylum. We know that there are many more people in the community who would like to come visit our display at the museum, and we encourage visitors to stop by any Saturday between 1:00 and 4:00 PM, except for holiday weekends, such as this weekend, when we're closed. We'll also have our patient and staff records and photo archives open in the Collins Building, which was also recently renovated, thanks to much help from the city, for those who might be interested in doing further research on the genealogy of their family or perhaps a patient or staff member that may have worked there. We'd also like to invite everyone to join us for our upcoming Westland Historic Commission meeting on Tuesday, May 29th at 7:00 PM in the Westland Historic Village Park located at 857 North Wayne Road in Westland, just around the corner from John Glenn High School. There are currently three open commissioner slots, and we always welcome new volunteers to come help out with projects at the park or to volunteer to serve as a docent on Saturdays when the park is open. And if you enjoyed the Eloise Museum grand opening, we have another great summer family fun event coming up soon. You are welcome to come to the summer bonanza on June 23rd from 12:00 to 4:00 at the Historic Village Park. There will be lots of activities for young and old, including historic reenactors, yard games, food, and numerous vendors. Bring the family and come get your picture taken on our historic fire truck, explore all six of our buildings, and tour our future butterfly garden that will be built around the well. We can't wait to see you. I'll throw in a pitch for Nelson Veda. He is building a butterfly garden around our wells, so that's our next upcoming project. He was unable to join us tonight, but if you see or hear from him, I know he could definitely use some funds to help out with building the butterfly garden. And again, we're supporting him with resources as well with our matching funds. So, for more information on our events, please follow Westland Historic Village Park on Facebook and Instagram. Thank you.
Miriam Katie?
Council President Proton and City Council, Deputy Mayor, Fire and Police, everyone and everyone behind me and everyone watching. I'm sure you can't guess why I'm here today, right? My shirt doesn't give it away. But I am here to talk about an event that's been going on quite a while in our community and has always been supportive, is our Westland Wayne Relay for Life. It is on June 9th. It starts at 11:00 AM. We're hoping, everyone is welcome. We're hoping you'll be there for our opening ceremony at 11:00 AM, and it goes for 20 hours until Sunday at 7:00 AM. We have festivities all day. It's a family event, trying to still raise more money and, you know, with just different things. 11:00 AM will be the National Anthem. We'll talk a little bit, and then it'll kick off our relay by our Survivor Walk and then a luncheon after that. So, if you are a survivor, no one, or a caregiver, please come out and join us. I'm gonna give you the website also, if you'd like to look into it any further about our event. It is relayforlife.org/westlandwaynei. And that is at Central City Park, Tann Park area, and Farmers Market is where the Survivor Luncheon will be. So, we would love to have you come out. Like I said, once again, the community has been so supportive of us, we couldn't do it as well as without your support. And please come out and join us and try to raise more money and towards this cure for this horrible disease. I did want to mention just briefly, there's also our Luminary Bayes that are $10 each you can do for in honor and memory of someone. If you haven't been to the ceremony at dusk, it's just breathtaking, and we do a walk in honor and in memory, and a video is played, and it's just amazing, at the same time as touching and just a really great way to honor. And we also do a, in honor of our first responder lap, and we'll let you know when that is, to come out and celebrate them, and a patriotic lap. So, all that schedule will be on our website, and of course, you can also call myself at 734-718-0476, and I can give you more details on that. I'm just gonna briefly tell you that what some of the funds, some people ask, like, what does this really do? Where does a lot of the money go? What do our dollars across the United States and down national raise? And just a few, to name a few. 4.6 billion invested in research since 1946. More than 15.5 million cancer survivors alive in the U.S. today, thanks in part to all of our work. 4.5 million free nights of lodging for cancer patients and their caregivers who traveled for treatment since 1984. 7.6 million free rides to treatment given to cancer patients since 2005. So, that is just some of the few things that the money that we've raised and that all of you have helped donate has done for that. So, come out and support. There's gonna be our team set up for the 20 hours. So many festivities and things for the families to do. We really appreciate your continued support. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Miriam.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open the floor to citizens' questions or input on the agenda. Citizens will be recognized before the business of the meeting commences to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Citizens are to limit their questions or input to three minutes. Is there anybody on my right? Ms. McKinney?
Okay. I can't get it to clear. Annual official land use for proposed Lucky Treat Meat Drive-Thru. That's an old gas station. The building's right up to the fence. How are they gonna do a drive-thru? Just curious.
Is there anybody on my left? Mr. Coleman?
Thank you. Good evening, Council Kevin Coleman. My items are on the consent calendar, item H, the GLWA contract. Is there gonna be any change to our water rates this year? And item I and K in the budget amendment, what are the, through the chair to the budget director, are there any big changes to the budget in those amendments? Thank you.
Is there anybody on my right? Ray?
Hi, my name is Ray. I was looking at this one. Fireworks is the next biggest thing, is gonna be the biggest thing this year, I know. Hopefully, I only kept it under control last year. Hopefully, I know they're doing it at Myers, selling them? How many places are selling them? I'm just curious. So, you know, I'm just trying to help out here, so, thank you.
Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Mr. Graham?
Richard Graham, Westland, also on item E for the fireworks. What type? I know at one time they were allowed to put stuff and not, and there was some sort of permits, so I was just curious about, to Ray's comment, how many tents are we gonna have? How much fireworks is gonna be sold on, you know, various street corners? Regarding item F and Blues Brews and Barbecue, there's a comment about to waive all fees except mechanical. Regarding that, there was portable generators that there was a lot of issues with last year. Are those gonna be there this year? And is the city going to be, or is Blues Brews and Barbecue going to pay for those portable generators to be there? Regarding H, it looks like regarding the Water Authority, it looked like there is a couple hundred thousand dollars coming back. So, per the question also, is our rates gonna be reduced based on the money coming back? Item J, regarding the budget amendment, it says waive procedure declaring an emergency due to time constraints. Just what is this all about? What is this emergency? So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments on the agenda and move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Londo. Is there support? Any support? Support by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Oh, there was a few questions, I'm sorry. Councilman Hammond?
Yes, I'd like to remove item H from the consent calendar and make it 1A, New Business, please.
It's a motion to move the item as 1A. Is there support? Support by Councilman Hart. Is there any other discussion? There was a question on item E. Bruce?
Every year we get them. Every year there's been less. Last year, there was just one. I would anticipate, because of the changes that occurred in the ordinance over the last couple of years, this will probably be the only one. This was the only one last year. That doesn't mean that it will be. We might get one more, but really with the ordinance, the way that it was amended a couple years back, it really only allows them in locations that have wide expanse parking lots like the Meyer. So, the whole idea of the ordinance was to eliminate them on the street corners, eliminate all these temporary sales, and properly regulate them, keeping them away from residential areas, keeping in the heart of commercial areas. So, one or two, I would expect this year, but we'll have to wait and see. All the companies have the right to apply for a location, and it is still a bit early in the year, so Clerk's Office, if they receive any, they'll be coming forward to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. There was a question on item F. Mr. Harnos, I think the question was, will the generators that were purchased last year be present at the Blues Brews and Barbecue?
I'll take that one, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Certainly. If the city generators are used, we've set up a payback procedures for those, so the payback procedures would be followed and they would be reimbursed if they're used.
And then to finance, either Steve or Dan, there were questions on H, I, J, and K?
Point of order, please. Go over to the business.
I, J, and K, the budget amendments?
Regarding I, J, and K, the budget amendments, these are typical this time of year. There's nothing significant or out of the ordinary. During this time of year, we kind of look at the accounts and true them up, and then propose and introduce the budget amendments. And they're both introduced and approved typically in the same council meeting.
Is there any further discussion in council? Further discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the regular meeting held May 7, 2018. Minutes of the special meeting held May 7, 2018 at 6:30 PM. Minutes of the study session held May 7, 2018 at 5:30 PM. Minutes of study session held May 7, 2018 at 6:00 PM. Requests from TNT Fireworks to operate a seasonal temporary fireworks tent in the Meyer parking lot, 37201 Warren Road, from June 28th through July 4th, 2018, with the hours of operation being 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Requests from Brook Ellen Swope of the Westland Chamber of Commerce to conduct the 8th Annual Blues Brews and Barbecue Event on Friday, August 3, and Saturday, August 4, 2018, 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and to waive all fees except mechanical. Requests from Norway Boxing Club to hold its 1st Annual Westland International Youth Boxing Tournament to be held at the Mike Madonna Ice Arena on June 16 and June 17, 2018, 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Item H was moved to item 1A. Introduction of Budget Amendment, 2018-02, 3rd Quarter of Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2018. Waive procedure declaring an emergency due to time constraints to allow the introduction and adoption of Budget Amendment, 2018-02, 3rd Quarter of Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2018, in the same meeting. The last item on the consent calendar, Adoption of Budget Amendment, 2018-02, 3rd Quarter, 2018-02, 3rd Quarter of Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2018. Moving to New Business, item 1A. Approval of Great Lakes Water Authority Contract Amendment. Contract would be effective July 1, 2019, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute on behalf of the city.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hart. Is there support? Support by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion on the item? Councilman Hammond?
Through the chair to Mr. Smith, can you touch on the necessity of the amendment to the contract and kind of go through the highlights of this and the reasoning behind it, please?
Through the chair, back in 2009, the city of Westland entered into a 30-year agreement with the Great Lakes Water Authority. What we're doing here is we're amending some of the contract amounts that the city had in the contract back then. And what this does is it actually will reduce the amount of water that we originally signed up for, and by doing so, it will save about $200,000 a year. And more specifically, what we're reducing is the max day and peak hour factors, which are calculated in the rates every year. So, by doing this, and the Great Lakes Water Authority allows cities to amend the amounts they originally signed up for. So, that's what we're doing in this instance. And Vito is here from OHM, and he worked with the administration on calculating the numbers. I don't know if you want to come up, Vito, if you can answer any other questions on it.
Vito Canelis, OHM. Yes, actually, as Steve indicated, that is correct. It's periodic. Next reopener will be... periodic. Next reopener will be in approximately four years. And just to make sure that people understand, the cost savings is calculated based on everybody else's units of service staying the same. And since every, there are other communities changing as well, so the estimated amount is, is just that, just an estimate.
Anything refunded back to the residents or any effect on the, the rates, the upcoming rates, any lowering of the rates?
Through the chair, these, this will not take effect till July 1 of 2019. And as councils are aware, you approved the rate study that's ongoing right now. So, those, that savings, although it's estimated, will be baked in next year. So, for the current year, there would be no reduction in rates or refunds back to customers at this point.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation from both of you. I appreciate it. That's all from me. Thanks.
Is there any further discussion on council? Further discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimous.
New business, item 1. Minutes of study session held May 17, 2018.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hart. Is there support? Support by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? No discussion? After. A roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
I'm staying.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hertzberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Londo?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item 2. Approval of Revised Site Plan for Proposed Cooler Addition to Existing Speedway Service Station Building, 110 South Wayne Road, southwest corner of Wayne Road and Cherry Hill Road. Planning Department Number 2094C, revised. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Councilman Hart. Is there support? Support by Councilman Hammond. Bruce, did you want to?
Yeah, just briefly. This is a colored version of the site plan submitted by the petitioner. Cherry Hill is at the top of the picture. That puts Wayne Road at the right. This is the existing building, the existing canopy. This is where that addition is going to be. It's on the south side of the building. It's a 179 square foot cooler addition. It'll be made of a metal material, but it'll be of a, a applied color that matches the exterior of the building. All departments have reviewed, expressed no objection, therefore approval is recommended, sir.
Petitioner present? Do you want to come up and have anything you'd like to add or any more discussion on that?
Sure, I'm John Sirisack with Speedway, and I'm just here to answer any questions. I brought renderings, but I didn't realize you were going to have electronically.
Is there any questions or comments from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, the motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
New business, item 3. Approval of Special Land Use for Proposed Lucky Treat and Eat Drive-Thru, 34230 Glenwood, northeast corner of Glenwood and Grand Traverse. Planning Department Number 186A. Planning Commission recommends approval as the proposed use meets the special land use standards of the zoning ordinance.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hart. Support? Supported by Councilman Londo. There was a question on the feasibility of the drive-through?
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Tem. This is the property. I'll, I'll kind of address that as I just go through my presentation. This is the property. It is at the northeast corner of Glenwood and Grand Traverse. So, this, you see the building in the east side of the property, and then the existing parking area at the west side of the property. You can see behind it, there is single-family homes, duplexes, a variety of residential uses in the Norway area. This is the rear of the property. I think, to answer the question, this is kind of one of those things where a fence does not necessarily make a property line. You, you kind of hear that all the time in the building department. But that fence is not located at the property line. And so, with that fence being relocated, you'll see with the site plan, there is room for a drive-through at the, at the back of this building. And that's where the drive-through would be, and this is the rear of that building. Again, residential uses to north. This is turning around, looking to the south. This Wayne Memorial High School. And then to the east, a couple of existing commercial buildings as well. And to the west, again, residential uses. So, this is the site plan. This is the building itself. And the fence you saw runs right along back here, but the property line is actually back in this location. So, the idea of, of this particular special land use is to reorient the parking, ultimately close off the closest approach to Grand Traverse, create a drive-through around the back of the building. And it is the drive-through that is the special land use that is being requested. The actual restaurant use itself, ice cream, you know, restaurant, is a permitted use. We're, again, just looking at the, the drive-through. They'll be providing updated screening along the north and a little bit of the east side of the site as well. A dumpster enclosure for dumpster will be located on that site. There will be eight stacking spaces as required by ordinance, and a total of 10 parking spaces provided on this site, which is, again, in accordance with the ordinance standards for a building of this size and the use group that's going in. I don't have an image of it, but there is a refresh of the exterior of the building that is proposed as well. And so, that information has all been provided to the council. At its May meeting, the planning commission did review this, and they forwarded a recommendation for the granting of a special land use as the use proposed meets the standards of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Is the petitioner here?
Good evening, everybody.
Do you have any comments, anything you'd like to add?
Well, nothing. I mean, if you have, anybody had any questions for us, you know?
Is there any discussion from council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, the motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
New business, item 4. Approval of Special Land Use for Proposed Little Caesar's Restaurant with Drive-Thru, 31451 Cherry Hill Road, southwest corner of Cherry Hill and Merriman. Planning Department Number 1382L. Planning Commission recommends approval as the proposed use meets the special land use standards of the zoning ordinance.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Londo. Is there support? Support by Councilman Hammond.
This is the, the property in question. This is a outbuilding in the Cherry Hill Marketplace Shopping Center. This is the unit that the Little Caesar's is going to be going into. There's currently the pet value in the remainder of that building. This just kind of gives you an idea of the, the unit. And then as well, this east side of the building, that's where the drive-through is proposed to be located. It's predominantly a commercial area, obviously, southwest corner of Cherry Hill and Merriman, commercial uses in Garden City. There are some single-family homes on Cherry Hill directly across the street. But then, obviously, this building is surrounded by the shopping center, the Kroger, CVS, and a variety of other commercial uses that make up this larger conglomerate shopping center. This is a colored version of the site plan. North is to the top, so Cherry Hill's to the top of the picture. The yellow part is, is the pet store. This orange area is where the Little Caesar's restaurant would be. This is a corporate location as well. Then what they'll be doing is basically just reorienting the parking lot in that area to create a drive-through at the east side of the building. The parking spaces, the net will be the same. The ground coverage will be the same. They're just relocating islands, relocating parking. As you saw from the building, there's really, it's a brick building. Not going to be a whole lot of changes to that building. Site lighting, site drainage, all of the other site amenities are not going to be affected by this particular proposal. And again, at the May meeting, the planning commission reviewed this, and is forwarding a recommendation for the granting of a special land use as the proposed use meets the ordinance. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there a rep here from Little Caesar's?
Peter Spitz from Little Caesar's Architecture.
Julie Blue, Little Caesar's Architecture.
Any more comments, anything you'd like to add?
We're excited to bring this to your community.
Okay. Is there any discussion from council? Councilman Londo?
Through the chair to either the petitioner or Bruce Thompson. Just a half mile to the east and a half mile to the west are current existing locations. Is this a brand-new location or is it a relocation of one of the current locations you have in Inxster and Garden City?
This is a relocation from this store that's down, down the road in Garden City.
The Henryoff location, then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion from council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, the motion carries. Thanks.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
New business, item 5. Approval of Proposed Land Division and Combination, Parcels Number 028040042000 and 0046000, west side of Executive Drive and east side of Hicks, north of Ford Road. Planning Department Number 2209. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations, and if approved, directs the city attorney to draft the necessary land division resolution.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hart. Is there support? Do we have support? Support by Councilman Londo. Bruce?
Thank you. This land division combination involves two properties, both of them industrial. One that fronts on Hicks Road, that's the building that you see here, the Michigan Academy of Gymnastics. These lots are part of a larger industrial subdivision. This property, or both properties are surrounded by a variety of industrial uses in building, buildings. This is the actual property that's going to be split. It's the natural area, the, the undeveloped area in the background of this picture. The parking lot you see in the foreground is the existing parking lot for the Michigan Academy of Gymnastics. The land is being split off the other parcel that I'm going to show you so that that natural area can be created for additional parking for the Michigan Gymnastics Academy. Their business is going very well, and they need more parking. So, the adjacent neighbor, Jetco Corporation, is on Executive Drive. It is their piece of property that is being split off. You can kind of see it at the left of the picture in, in the background there. Again, in the heart of an industrial subdivision. All these properties zoned with industrial uses, all zone, I-1 light industrial. This is the back of that property, and this piece will be split off and attached to the piece on Hicks. So, there's two images I have. This is the property, the Jetco property. The overall rectangle is that property. You see the dashed kind of area in the back. That's the area that is to be split off. Then, it would be attached to, again, the one on Hicks, creating this L-shaped property on the left. Both lots that are proposed will exceed ordinance requirements, both lot, both lot width and lot area. Therefore, approval is recommended, sir.
Is there a petitioner present?
Hi, Nancy Seawick. I'm the owner and president of Jetco Corporation.
Okay. You have anything you'd like to add?
No.
Is there any discussion from council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries.
Thank you.
New business, item 6. Approval of Voucher.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Councilman Hart. Do we have support? Support by Councilman Londo. I don't believe there were any questions. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, the motion carries. We'll move on to citizens' comments or requests. Citizens will be recognized at the end of the meeting, immediately following the agenda item, approval of vouchers. Citizens are to limit their questions to three minutes. All citizens wishing to speak will be heard. Is there anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Mr. Coleman? Thank you, Councilman Hertzberg. Kevin Coleman, candidate for state representative. Through the chair to our police chief that's here tonight. Do we still have a, a, a school resource officer in our high school in Westland? Chief?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
John Glenn High School.
Okay. I'd been hearing that there wasn't in Wayne, so I wanted to make sure that that Westland did have that. At the last council meeting, I did speak about police manpower, and it's something I've always advocated for as a councilman. I'm advocating for this now as well. A lot of times when we, when we run our campaigns as politicians, we talk about supporting our police and our fire departments. But when the, when it comes time to approve a budget or work through a budget, that's when we can really put some action with our words. I did want to thank the mayor for, for contacting me a few days after the last council meeting. We did speak briefly, and he reached out about my questions. But what I was trying to do at the last meeting was really get a sense of where the council members stood regarding our upcoming budget, and whether there was any wiggle room or the ability to pay for any more police officers. So, that's something I would like to hear back about tonight. Thank you. Is there anyone on my right?
Of course, I've got positive things to say here tonight. And I want to say kudos to the fire department, too, because, you know, they save a lot of lives out there with these apartment complex fires. I know there was another one, I believe it was a week ago or something. After it was done, I went over there. I couldn't believe it. Oh, the roof just caved in like that. But I want to say, police chief, good job for, takes a lot of work to, you know, save lives, too. You can't be everywhere. So, and anyway, let's talk about Wayne Westland Schools. Special Ed has been really, the leadership council was really good, and I sat through that training. I even spoke. And I've gotten claps, kudos twice about my life, and I'm living a life today and not sitting on the couch. And I'm making a difference for people out there. I also talked about mental health, mental health awareness month, because I could say, one out of the four is scary. And we need, we need to support people even into that crisis. People sometimes don't know where to go, where to turn. But anyway, I got a big peer conference I'm going to tomorrow. Gone for three days. And I'm always saying good things about Westland and Westland Police Department. Along with it is the leadership, and I think you guys are the number-one leadership. Help other police officers out there in their leaderships in their different cities, too. So, and networking out there. And I'm going to Alabama in June for five days. Big nationwide conference. So, I'm doing a whole lot of things, and I'm going to keep at it. Thank you.
Is there anyone on my left?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kevin Castle, longtime resident city of Westland. I was here a couple of weeks ago. I'm back again to invite everybody to our shared parenting forum, which will be held here on Wednesday, May 30 at 7 p.m. I stand here before, I stand here before you, all of you this evening on behalf of the 26 million children that will rest their heads this evening without access to one of their biological parents. Large percent of them may not even know when they will have the contact with their father or mother again. This is due to parental alienation. Since last August, I have been a part of a group representing the Michigan chapters of two organizations focusing on the goal to have a shared parenting legislation that will truly have the best interest of the child. And that's exactly what House Bill 4691 does. Many of the group that I am representing will be in attendance next Wednesday. And we have volunteered not only our time and our own money just to see that this bill gets passed. We have met with over 80% of the current legislative staff from, from Wayne County, personally I have met with representatives from Wayne County to Kent County, the Clare County, and all the way up to Grand Traverse. In addition, I've even sat down with our great representative, Bob Kozowski, in his office, and fellow Rocket alum, Representative Jewel Jones to the South. To think that this issue is only being focused on Michigan would be wrong. Recently, there has been shared parenting legislation that has made its way through various other states. Just last week, Virginia passed House Bill 1351 addressing that the court should consider joint legal, joint physical or sole custody, and there should be no presumption in favor of any such form. But last month, Kentucky took the first step. They passed House Bill 528, establishing a presumption of rebuttable by a ponderance of the evidence that equal shared parenting time is in the best interest of the children. In layman's terms, fit and willing parents will receive equal parenting time in Kentucky. In layman's terms, fit and willing parents will receive equal parenting time in Kentucky. With each passing month, 1,600 cases will pass through the Wayne County, Wayne County courts alone. How many of them actually are in the best interest of the child? The majority of them just fall into a cookie cutter approach of the state of Michigan's shared parenting time, which states that the non-constodial parent should only receive every other weekend, that's, that's two overnights, and a few hours on a Wednesday during the week. So four nights a month. And I will tell all of you this. If any of you have gone through it or would have gone through it, I would pretty much imagine all of you on here would be considered the non-constodial parent. Just because of your ability to provide full-time jobs, you would be considered a non-constodial parent and would be subjected to four overnights a month and a couple of hours on a Wednesday.
Sir?
Um, I challenge everybody to, uh, to be here, uh, next Wednesday, May 30th. Um, 4691, please follow us on, uh, Facebook, shared, um, parent.org. Um, look forward to seeing everybody, have a safe, um, and happy Memorial Day, everybody.
Is there anyone on my right? Mr. Graham?
Uh, Richard Graham, Westland. Through the chair to Mayor Wild or Deputy Mayor Ready, since in Mayor Wild's absence. Do you know how long someone has to wait to receive a response from the city when an application has been turned in for a board position? I did about five weeks ago and either one of my sponsors, uh, had been contacted either. During the April 23rd meeting, I asked about the IC, ICSC Real Estate Convention with a series of questions. Mayor Wild refused to answer and Council President Godbout provided very limited answers. He did state that they received an early bird special, which I asked about. I also asked about this, uh, a month previously in March and a year before. Based on my FOIA request, Council President Godbout misspoke, lied about getting the discount from his chair position. The city did not. I requested him to address this at his next council meeting, but he has not responded to my email about this specifically. Counsel, what is going to be done about this? Through the chair to Mayor Wild and Deputy Mayor Ready. Last year I filed a ser, series of FOIAs regarding travel expenses. Both of you submitted your wife's receipts, but somehow this was an error. My FOIAs were not completed by the city with the appropriate receipts, your receipts. There are possible issues with your baggage claim that was for the second bag on Delta, which is at the higher cost. Please, by Wednesday of this week, supply me with your receipts for these trips along with the receipt for the first bag that was based on my FOIA. Just in case you need more specifics, the event was the ICSC Real Estate Convention in Las Vegas and Mayor Wild submitted his wife's plane ticket and Deputy Mayor Ready, you submitted your wife's baggage ticket. Both submitted bags at the higher price. Please let me know and since Mayor Wild isn't here, I will email him that question first thing in the morning. Thank you.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments and move on to comments from the mayor's office.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just real briefly tonight, um, just want to speak on two quick issues. One, um, it's.
It was pointed out by Mr. Graham, Mayor Wild is not in attendance this evening. He pointed that out several times. Um, but, um, he's, tonight is his 50th birthday, so he was actually at a election commission meeting with the city clerk at 6:30. Maybe we would not schedule that next year for his birthday, if we can get him out of that one. But we let him go early tonight.
He chose the day.
We let him go early tonight so he could have dinner with his wife and kids. So for his 50th birthday, he's home having dinner with his wife and kids. And, um, yeah, we'll, we'll do some updates, uh, at the next meeting about the bulk pickup day. We had another successful bulk pickup day. I know preliminary numbers, we had 765 cars that came through. But we'll get the tonnage and all the other stuff and we had 50 homes that were serviced by our volunteers for our seniors that couldn't do the bulk pickup by themselves or drop the stuff up at the yard. So we want to thank our volunteers and Vic Bariff and Wayne Fort Civic League for helping out with that. And, uh, that's all we have this evening, thank you.
Thanks. Anything from the city attorney this evening?
Nothing this evening.
Then we'll start council comments with Councilman Johnson.
Uh, thank you. Uh, just in response to, uh, Mr. Coleman's question about, uh, police and fire, I think all of us up here would like to see police and fire staff with much more numbers. You weren't at the study session, but four police officers were made permanent, uh, that were on grant dollars. I believe the number for the PD should be about 95, my own personal opinion, and 62 at fire. There's only about one place left to get money out of the budget and that's in professional services. You know how hard that is to crack. Everybody needs to take their blinders off. If we really want to do that, there's money there to put a couple on. We'll never get to 95 or 62 in this budget, but I think we could put a couple of more in, in each department. I really believe that. And I agree with you, we, we need to do something with it. Uh, I hope that answers your question. Uh, Goodfellows, um, I'd like to thank the mayor's office because, uh, everybody knows we recently had two major fires at apartment complexes. A lot of the folks called the city, the city can't spend dollars to help folks like that. But the mayor did suggest that they call the Goodfellows and thank him for that, if you would, uh, Mr. Ready, um. I'll just say, uh, it worked. We had some calls from some of the residents over there too. Uh, the Goodfellows aren't always only here at Christmas time. If there's an emergency in town, they're here all year. Just want to announce and, and the Goodfellows need a lot of credit. We were able to send checks to 43 of those families over there, so each family got a check from the Goodfellows. It'll help with necessities, it's not going to get them a place to live, but it will help. Uh, and that's all I have, thank you.
Councilwoman Green?
Thank you. Um, I'd like to start tonight by thanking the children who came in and led the pledge tonight. They did a wonderful job. I'd also like to, uh, let Westland residents know that I am actively working on your behalf with, uh, issues that are brought to my attention by, uh, residents in the city. There is a gentleman who lives on Joy Road and anybody who travels that stretch of Joy Road between, uh, Newburgh and Wayne Road is pretty bad. And the gentleman shared with me that the road had not been repaired for many, many years. And some of you might be aware that that is a county road. So I reached out to, uh, Wayne County regarding that road and was successful at getting them to agree to repair that stretch of road. So, once the project is finished, there's a large development going on over there, uh, multi-homes development. And there's a lot of underground piping that has to occur before the project is completely completed. But at the close of that, uh, project, once it is approved and everything signed off, the, uh, Wayne County will come in and put down a new stretch of road in that area. So, um, I just wanted to express to any residents that if you do have any issues that I can assist with, um, on your behalf, uh, please let me know. You can email me, um, at tgreen@cityofwestland.com. Uh, or you can go directly to our city website and click on any of our pictures. That will send all of us an individual, uh, email. So please let me know if I can, uh, work for you. Um, I'm here because of your votes and I plan to, uh, give you the best service I possibly can for the next four years. I also would just like to remind everyone, as previously stated, that city hall will be closed on Monday. Um, so I'd also like to, uh, express a very special thank you to our veterans for all that you have done and all that you continue to do for our nation. Um, I pray that everybody has a very good, uh, Memorial Day. In terms of Kevin's question, uh, public safety, uh, is very important. I don't think there's any one of us that's, that is not, uh, uh, one of the most urgent, um, issues in our city. Uh, we all support public safety. I come from a union family. Uh, the police department received approval with everything that they submitted on their budget. So there was no recommendation for any cutbacks. Um, in terms of the fire budget, um, there were, some of the council stood with four, um, cuts against the fire department, uh, which would have occurred due to the recommended budget. But I'm confident in stating that, um, when the budget is finalized, there will not be any cuts to police or fire. However, police, there were no intended cuts. And also one of the things that the police department will also be getting, uh, is, uh, body cameras. That's one of the things that we did approve in the city as well. So there's tons of things that, that, you know, the police will be introducing. And like I said, I think I speak for all of us that we all, you know, support hands down public safety and, and resident safety first. And that's all I have, thank you.
Councilman Hammond?
Uh, thank you. With regards to the question, um, about hiring more police officers, no, there, there has not been any additional funds allocated for hiring new police officers. There is money in the budget. There is money in neighborhood services. There's $140,000 that's allocated, uh, for neighborhood services. And during the study session, I did speak against that. I did not want to see that money allocated to neighborhood services. And in my opinion and thoughts, I'd like to see that money go to hire some more police officers. I think with that $140,000, we can get, uh, better use of that. Uh, but, and again, I'd like to see the, the council and administration reconsider that line on, um, for the 140 grand and use that to hire some additional police officers. Uh, hopefully that answers your question. And, uh, hopefully everybody has a great Memorial Weekend and, uh, stay safe out there. Thank you.
Councilman Londo?
Thank you, President Pro temp Hertzberg. Great job running the meeting tonight. Want to start off also by expressing my concern for the families that were affected at the, um, Westwood Apartments, where 24 units were destroyed by the fire. And thankfully, none of the, the tenants were harmed in this fire, although there were some small animals that were. Uh, I want to start by thanking, well, the Goodfellows, that's, that was news to me. So thank you to the Westland Goodfellows for stepping up and, and taking care of the residents. And thank you to our Westland firefighters and police officers who were on scene for long hours and for the bravery shown, um, in the rescue efforts. I've been getting a lot of questions on how to, how to help. Um, not sure if they still need help, but if they do, you can reach out to Westwood Circle Apartments directly to see what else is exactly needed. And I'd also like to thank the seniors from the Westland Friendship Center and Director Barb Markham. They put together a fundraiser, um, to help with the recent victims of the fire. They sold food and raffle tickets at the Cruisin' with the Classics Car Show last week. And from what I can see while I was there, they did very, did very well. It just shows the compassion of our community and I appreciate all them for that. I appreciate Mrs. DeLuca for speaking about the Eloise Museum. I can cross that one off, but I would, I would encourage everyone to go out and, and check that out. I made it up there about 3:30 last, uh, last week. It was one of the, about 200 or 150 people that were there and it was absolutely amazing. So thank you to the Historical Commission and Jeff Kozlowski and everyone in attendance, uh, for the, the guided tour. Uh, as she stated, uh, every weekend except holiday weekends, you can visit them, um, from Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 P.M. And there will be someone there to guide you through a free tour. And donations are suggested, um, or accepted, excuse me, I would suggest them, they're accepted by them. Um, if you need the location, again, it's at 857 North Wayne Road and that's just south of Marquette. Also came by city hall last week to show my support for the very incredible While About Youth Works program and job fair, where many of our local business owners and managers were on hand to interview potential, uh, first-time job candidates or applicants. If you missed the event or you know a young person looking for summer employment, I'd encourage them to contact our Economic Development Director, Charles House, at 734-793-9300. Uh, I'd also like to thank the Westland Police Department Awards Committee for a wonderful 2018 awards ceremony this last weekend. It was a great event to recognize the work of our dedicated officers of the Westland Police Department. Congratulations to all the officers, the dispatchers and the civilians for their well-deserved awards, including our 2017 Officer of the Year, James Compton. Developing frontline leader starts at the top. I want to thank, uh, Chief Jedruck, Chief Miller, Chief Thavage and your command staff for, um, for all the hard work. You should be proud of all those, um, men and women. WIA baseball opening day was actually a few weeks ago. I was at J.C. Park, I wasn't able to attend, but I was able to speak to some of the WIA board members and they, they said it was an excellent event. Uh, the city was there with fire and police vehicles, the Michigan National Guard with their obstacle course, barbecue, food, a DJ and even pause from the Detroit Tigers was there. From the looks, it looked like everyone had a great time, so I want to, and they could not stop raving about our Parks and Recreation Director and our administration for the hospitality and the conditions of the field. So thank you to Brian Harnos and his team for all their hard work at the Parks and Recreation Department. And with that, Memorial Day is, uh, next Monday, so please everyone have a safe and enjoyable holiday weekend. And remember, Memorial Day is a federal holiday in which we remember those who died while serving in the armed forces of the United States. While most people think of it as beach trips, cookouts, Mondays off, uh, as they look forward to the holiday weekend, it's, it's important to remember what this day really means. In fact, Congress actually passed the law back in 2000 requiring Americans to take a moment of silence at 3:00 P.M. On Memorial Day to honor the fallen troops. I'll take that moment and I hope you, I hope you all do as well. To all the military, thank you for your service.
Councilman Hart?
Well, I got to go last today and I especially have everything taken away from me. But, uh, uh, really quick, uh, on a couple of things, police and fire. Um, we all sit up here, every single one of these council members, I could speak on their behalf. We fully support police and fire. Um, I think we all stand unified. Uh, we all have the same goal. Uh, I think we all have different opinions how to get there, but I think we're going to find, over time, as we're working through, uh, all of the difficulties, we're going to work together as a team to get through those items and get, uh, more police and fire added. We all want the same thing. Just sometimes there's different ways to get there. Uh, so I think we're going to be working through that. Um, I, I remember things a little bit differently. I, I was happy that we were allowed to, uh, were able to find some opportunities. The administration was able to find some opportunities, uh, at our request to go ahead and secure the fire funding. And I, you know, our next nut to crack is the police funding and getting some more police. And the other issue that we heard a lot of us last year was ordinance enforcement and some of the neighborhood services. A lot of people ask for that. So we have to provide police, fire and services. So trying to find a way to get all of those taken care of. And we got bulk pickup, uh, back too. So I mean, it's, it's a big issue and we're moving in the right direction. So again, thank you to the administration, the colleagues for continuing to work on that. I appreciate it. Everybody's involved. Uh, the last thing I'll leave you with today is of course, it's been said before, it's a Memorial Day on Monday. Uh, always a big deal at my house. Uh, I always get to at least a 50, 20, 30, uh, thanks for your service messages because I'm a veteran, as I, you all know. Um, and I always take the thanks, but I know what the difference between Veterans Day and Memorial Day really is. Uh, Veterans Day was when you find a guy like me and you shake his hand, maybe buy him a beer and thank him for his time. But Memorial Day is a little bit different. Uh, Memorial Day is the, the day you thank the men and women that physically put their lives down for all of ours. And, uh, there's a little something that always helps me remember and I'll try not to cry. Uh, Tyler James was just a baby when he died in Nam. He was raised by his sister and a hardworking mom. He was raised to love his country and every time he saw the flag, he thought of his father and how he gave all that he had. When Tyler finished high school, he found a good job. He helped his mom, he helped his mom and his sister because he knew that times were hard. Little did they know the world was to change. Yeah, buildings came down by men and hijacked planes. Tyler hugged his mom and sister and headed out the door. His country would respond, he knew there would be war. He enlisted in the service, they made him a strong man. After basic training, he was sent to a foreign land. Oh, we served with the bravest, they were proud and they stood tall. Some of them had fathers whose names are on a wall. After many months of battle, Tyler's mom got the call. Tyler James, her only son, took his final fall. On a hillside in the country now lies Tyler James. And his mother spoke the words engraved beneath his name. He was proud of his country, he would fight until we won. He was killed in battle like father, like son. Remember this Monday, thank you.
I'll start by addressing some of the, uh, we had some residents here today talking about the boards and commissions and their applications. Uh, there are a number of empty spots, um, a good amount of the boards and the commissions. So if you've applied and not heard back, that could be due to a number of reasons. Um, perhaps there are not enough people applied to make a quorum and more people need to apply until, uh, you'll be contacted. Uh, the Westland Historical Society has three open spots right now and they're doing a lot of work this year. They're really getting the ball rolling over there. I went on Saturday to try to get a tour of the Eloise Museum. I wasn't able to get in for a couple of hours and I had other engagements. So it was real popular. I, I saw the bus every 15 minutes, it was coming and dropping people off and that, it was a real good event. And I, uh, I hope, if you haven't been there, that you can make it out to the historical park and take some tours. They're open Saturdays from 1:00 P.M. to 4:00 P.M., uh, excluding holiday weekends, excluding Memorial Day weekends. So you have to wait a couple of weeks if you want to check it out. But, um, there's been a lot of interest in the ethics committee and a number of the beautification committees. So if, if you're at home and you're watching and you, you think you might want to help out, you know, I would encourage you to, uh, get on the city website and send in your application. Um, it was said that there was proposed cuts to the fire department. That, that's not the case. It was suggested to move some of the funding from the fire department over to the police department during our budget meetings. But with that, there was an. But with that, there was an increase in overtime within the fire department to essentially maintain the same staffing levels as last year. So, there would be no change, but Councilman Hammond, I appreciate your suggestion of the additional money going to ordinance. It looks like we may have to have another study session on this budget, you know, if we're going to really consider hiring police and fire. So, I hope everybody enjoys their Memorial Day weekend and is there a motion to adjourn?